Here might be on or off. Good evening and welcome to April 23rd, 2025 planning board meeting. The first item in the agenda is Sewell Hoyt Road LLC. Mr. Belanger is here to present the plan.
He's running away.
Yes, he's running away.
Can we do, take them out of order and do a pledge of allegiance before we do?
Sure. I don't have a problem with that. We're gonna do a pledge of allegiance right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jacques. Thank you. You? Still tired.
When we were here last time, we were looking for a three lot subdivision. We're dropping that down to a two lot subdivision. We met with Army Corps about the 420 easement and what we could do in that. The deed was poorly written in the first place, but we got by that. And the way the Army Corps interprets it, it's, we used the 420 generated through LiDAR, which is, I think, much more accurate than the 420 that they use generated off of USGS whenever. They want us to hold the 420 that they have traced on their plans. So it's a little different. It's actually a little better for us. But what we're doing is dropping the one big lot that was out back. We're looking at two conforming lots. The existing homes on Lot 9, we're gonna drop that acreage down 11.08 acres. We've got the full frontage on that. We do have that, that traced 420 elevation line coming in. It's a magenta that passes kind of through the well on that lot. And then the next lot is gonna be much larger. It's gonna be about 42 acres. Most of the elevation, the 420, is, is to the east. We've got a building pocket just down probably about 600 feet in, you said?
Yeah, it's about 600 feet in, 700 feet.
We will need a wetlands crossing for one little pocket here and a CUP. We'll have to add that to our application package to get to there. It keeps us out of the 420. We will have a little bit of a crossing here. We're gonna have to deal with the Army Corps to make sure we don't encroach on their, their volume storage. But we did, we did meet with them and go through that with them. And their big thing is they don't want to lose any storage. So at this point, we don't have to do any road upgrade because we've got adequate frontage.
Yeah, with the, when we were originally in here, we were talking about doing a two lot subdivision or a three lot subdivision. And when we were in concept stage, you guys had said if you just do two lots, we have enough built frontage already and we could just do that. Sandcan Homes wanted to try to pursue trying to get three lots. And what hap, a big part of what happened, why we went back down to two, is we had, we had our second lot, we had a house right up in front here. And if you go by the Army Corps, because we had a pocket that, we had actual elevation that was above 420. But when you go by the Army Corps map that they gave us and said, we don't care whether the elevation is over 420 or not, you can't do a house in there. So if, once we got to that point, then we were going to keep three lots, we were gonna have to draw, do a road out this far to, for the first lot, to get into a little pocket right here. And then we were gonna have to do a second driveway like way out to the back. I mean, it was, it was like 1,500 feet of driveway, plus the road upgrades, plus like everything. It, it just compounded into something that was, it, it isn't feasible to justify doing the third lot. So by doing just the two lots, we have the original building site that we can rebuild on with its own lot. And we made it 11 acres, so it'll, so we can keep it in current use. Like basically that house is in current use with the whole lot. So we can have a little one acre pocket for a house and keep the rest of it, keep the rest of that lot in current use. And then the remainder, we can, we will have to take out the distance for the road and the, and the house lot for, out of current use. But then the remainder of it just is one big large lot with a somewhat reasonable length driveway, so. So that's kind of the reason this went back and forth. And we feel like we maybe wasted a little time going for three lots, but we didn't really know until this last meeting with the Army Corps that, how bad it was gonna get with them. So that's the reason we went back to the two.
So most of the remaining of that lot is below the 420 line?
Yeah, so if you look at, if you look at the magenta line on here, this is their trace line. This is what they say that their flowage rates are, right there. So all of this, and if you look, if you would go back to our original plan, we had that big mound right here. But they're saying that doesn't matter whether the elevation, what the elevation is, that magenta line is what the, is what their flowage rates are.
People that own that lot, are still, they still gonna be able to do forestry management and everything on their land, or does the Army Corps prohibit a lot of stuff?
No, they're allowed to do pretty much what they want. They just can't interrupt the floor, the storage areas, what it comes down to.
They wouldn't be able to bring fill in and like fill in a spot where it's lower than that now. But the little bit of driveway, the little bit of driveway that we have right here, basically what we have to do is whatever, whatever we grade up to get it, you know, above, like just so there's no drainage on it, we just have to make sure there's an equal amount dug out. We're just basically balancing whatever the storage is. And almost immediately, we get out of it. It's only like, it's only like 200 feet in and we're out of it again immediately. So that, that's pretty straightforward.
If the filled dirt is going lower.
That's the Army Corps 420 line.
Right up onto the driveway step and kill two birds with one stone then.
Yep.
So you're gonna need a wetland crossing.
Yeah, there's, there's like a narrow little spot, like where it went between, where it went between two wetlands that we should, we should definitely get a wetland crossing for it. There is a pocket in front of it, but the elevation, like regardless of what they say about the 420, what they say the 420 is, the, if you look at the plan, the prior plan.
Get some looking at.
Yeah, it's low, it's low in the area before the wetland. Like it's at like 410 or 408 or something like that, right in this area. So if we.
I think you're at 410 where you have the 4K shown now on this plan.
Yeah, 4K area, but if you look at the, if you look at the, where the house location is, it's at like 428 or something like that.
Where's your house?
The house is gonna be on the upper side.
Okay, maybe up here.
Yeah, exactly. So you go across, you go across this little narrow spot.
Isn't that like right here?
Yeah, you're looking at this one.
This corner is this corner?
Yep, yep.
So this point has to be here, but that's gonna be in the setbacks.
That's, no, there's the setback line right there. This is, that, that line is not the same anymore.
I realize, I realize this line changed. That corner's the same, looks like.
No, not necessarily.
Well, boy, it's real, looking at this wetland, it's real close, 'cause there's a wetland.
Yeah, so right here, there's, there's the setback line right there.
I understand that.
And the house has plain room to sit right inside there, right below it. So that was our original dark 420 line, so 422, 424. That was considered right on that pocket on the hill.
What's the, what's the flood elevation per FEMA? 420, I assume?
No, there, there's no FEMA in this area.
I don't believe the, I don't think there is a FEMA flood zone in this area.
It's just, it's just the flowage rate for Army Corps. It's not a, it's not a FEMA flood zone at all.
FEMA doesn't show anything as flood zone up here?
No, no.
Wow. That's a break.
Yes.
Did you get the original one correct?
Yes, we should.
I don't know what the shoot says.
Yeah, 'cause we're right on the edge of the Army Corps. Like if the Army Corps dam ever filled up to the entire depth, that's where we're at. We're not anywhere near like a low line flood zone.
The reason I'm asking is I did, I did several projects down the stream of the dam.
Yep.
And Army Corps line is right where the Army Corps and the FEMA line are in the same place. So if that's the case here, and it's depicted by the elevation, you're going by 420, not the magenta line.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
That's why I don't know.
Yep.
Let's look at that. I don't think there was a FEMA line up here at all. I don't think so, but we'll verify.
We'll, we'll verify that.
Why does it, it looks like the driveway is actually in the 420 zone. Beginning of.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, this driveway starts in there, in the 420 area. You can, you can pass through it, you just have to make sure the volumes match, is all.
So it could get flooded. Is that the high water mark?
Yeah, your, your entire road is gonna be flooded too, if that, if that ever happens. I mean, the likelihood, the likelihood of it ever going to 420 is like a one in one, like a 1,000 year event or something like that. I mean, it's, it's probably never gonna happen, but.
It went within six inches though in 1986.
You did? Wow.
Was six inches from going over the spillway of the dam. First time ever.
What is, what is the spillway elev, the spillway elevation isn't all the way to 420 though, is it?
I think it is, isn't it?
Like 420-ish, 420 gives it a fuck.
Yeah.
Pardon me for, but.
It was very, very close.
Wow.
Within inches of going over the spillway uncontrolled.
From our discussions with them, they don't, they don't necessar, I mean, you can have your septic in it, you can have like everything in it, like they don't, they don't necessarily care what's in it as long as you aren't affecting the volume.
Well, you couldn't put a house in it.
They don't want a house in it, correct. Yep. But driveways, like you can, you can use, use, use the land for whatever, as long as you don't affect the volume. Like so a driveway can pass through it, all, all those things can happen.
They did that across the street from you.
They did, didn't they?
Everything but that little house piece flooded out there.
Yeah, well, that added to the capacity, didn't it?
Yeah. So you're gonna need a wetland permit and a variance for the wetland buffer.
Yes. A variance?
Yeah. Way you go doing zone and wanting to get a variance for wetland buffer. I said CUP, but it's a variance. It's not a big deal, it's just another thing.
Yeah, you don't need the variance for crossing the oiling, you need it going through the buffer.
For the buffer.
Okay.
The wetlands are okay, if you don't mind that.
Never mind them.
Don't mess around with the buffer.
So you guys would want to see the, we'd have to, you'd want us to be through the VZBA process, have our, have our variance for the wetland buffer, have our wetland, do our wetland permit in place before you guys would consider it? Or where, what, what do, what do we all need done before you guys would consider an approval?
We definitely need the variance, but we would.
Okay.
We could do a conditional on the wetland permit. I would like to see, well, obviously we're gonna see when you get to the other set of plans that's gonna show topo and.
Yes.
This magenta line.
Yep.
It, it doesn't track. I mean, it's just.
I understand. Something to talk about.
Yeah.
Talk with.
Sure.
Yeah, since we were, since we made a somewhat big change in what the direction we were going, we wanted to make sure we tried to make it come, come show you what we were doing and make it clear and make sure you guys didn't have any questions before we went this way But definitely takes away from some of the concerns that were from our firm before. Like it's, it's, it's a pretty benign use at this point with just two, I know, one more house.
Why don't you go around the wetland with your driveway? Avoid the permit, avoid the variance.
We could. I had it, I had it doing that originally. I mean, we could, we could loop it around and up and in.
I'm sure the wetland board would appreciate it. I'm sure they're gonna ask you why you don't.
Well, you're going down through a low, low area and this is by far the shortest way into it.
I'm not disagreeing with you one bit. I just know how the EDS is.
It makes a lot more sense to just go straight in, since it, especially since it's a narrow little spot. If it was like a wide open wetland area, like either that or that, I would not, wouldn't consider trying to cross it. But you can follow kind of right along the contour. It's a pretty flat driveway. If you go down and around through here, you're gonna come in, you're gonna go down a hill and back up a hill and by doing it across the wetland, it's like.
Well, that's where your driveway was before.
No, I know, that's when we were doing a third lot though.
Great, I understand.
Yep, yep.
I'm just saying, I don't think the topo's that challenging for right through there.
But if worse came to worse, at least you have that option.
Yeah, we, we could have that option. I mean, we could, in theory, we could show the driveway like that and come back and do the purple. And if somebody wants to pursue the wetland and the variance after the fact, they could do that too.
What was the 90 day clock?
Oh, that's well, yeah.
Forgot about the 90 day clock. I'm sure that's well, definitely going by now.
Well, well gone by.
So you can give us a little letter saying or an email saying.
Yep, yeah, we can do that. I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Sandcan and see whether they want to just show it going down and around.
Anybody for the public, can we comment, questions?
Yeah, I got some questions.
Sure.
So between me and the Gordon family that owns the property across the street, we're wondering about road improvements because if we're gonna add this traffic to the road, the majority of that road, two cars can't pass. That's one issue. Another issue is there's two culverts in there. One of them might need replaced and it's up on, on the higher side, just below the old Sugar Hill speedways you come down the hill. The water pools hard on the Gordon side and doesn't drain off.
Wait, that's way up the road.
Yep. So, and then further down, just past my property corner, there's a huge rock that like juts out almost into the road. And when they grade the road, they've buried the stone wall on the Gordon side. They just go around that rock. They haven't addressed the rock at all. It hasn't been an issue for us, but if you add more traffic to the road, it may become an issue.
One house?
What's that?
We're adding one house.
Yeah, potentially. Well, that other house only had one guy in it for X amount of years, but if you get, you know, multiple.
I'm gonna be sure you understand, they're not proposing any road improvements, they're adding one lot.
Right.
Okay.
So their plans here, they're not gonna affect storage or drainage, like if, if they have to pull water under that property because the Army Corps puts the water on there? It's, it's all gonna be the same as it was?
Right.
Okay, so, all right. All right.
Yeah, we, we went to, I went with Steve Dermody at the Army Corps.
Yep.
And explained what we're trying to do and talked to him about it. We use LiDAR generated topography, which is current, kind of accurate. But they, they want us to hold that 420 line that they have on their map that was generated, you know, by hand. So that's what we have.
Okay.
But it's everything east of that line.
Okay.
It's in there, there is.
This second driveway, is that gonna go in like at the bottom of the, where the, where the improved road ends?
No, not quite that far.
Or before that?
It doesn't even get to where the road ends.
Okay.
This is the access point to kind of get, comes out to the shooting range here. This is the.
Yep, yep.
So it, it kind of rides that same area there.
Okay.
And there is, this is a low area, like you said.
Yeah.
It tends to pond. It, it's not a well, but it tends to pond up. This is where the, we met with, I can't remember his name now, the road agent. And this is where they plow to is the second gateway here.
Okay.
So that keeps us on a class five.
Okay.
Up to that point. Before that was gonna be an improvement up to there.
Yeah, for the, for the third lot, we didn't have any, we didn't have built road frontage, but for two lots, we have built frontage for the, the correct amount for both lots. That's already there.
All right, well, that's all my question. Cool, thank you.
So where are these culverts you're talking about? Where, where are these culverts you're talking about? Sorry.
Up here or? There, there's a low area here. This is his property here, this stone wall's common line. We're low and wet here. I don't know if there's a culvert there or not.
All right, wait a minute, I'm gonna get my gun.
Sure, turn around.
Which, where's Sugar Hill Road at?
Way up here.
It should come down.
This is your property.
Let's turn around with this side right here.
Yeah, I can get upside down. Probably better.
It's further up here. It's further up here, almost across where the Gilmans are, where Norma Gilman's house is. It's just above her spot right there. Right, so I, I didn't think that we're in culvert studio here. We didn't talk to the road agent originally. He, he had asked us that.
Right.
We sort of turned around in somewhere up in here, I think, or.
Yeah, the, our, when we were doing it originally, the turnaround was gonna be all the way up to there.
Yep.
See, there was, but now the, now the last driveway is gonna be way back here. And, but they go to right here right now.
Yeah, the culverts are up this way. But one of them is like, it's junk. The other one is, is not that bad. They've actually replaced it once, they had outside. Every time it rained hard, it washed out.
Well, just traffic from one more lot. Any other questions for the public? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. What's, what's the board think? Any questions, comments, concerns? I guess not.
The only thing I, I, I heard you say there was one new house. Was there an existing house?
Well, one, one new lot.
There was, I almost said two burned down.
There was a house here.
Two new houses would be built potentially.
Yes. One new lot.
If that house didn't, wasn't that long ago, burned down, was it?
You could build a house there tomorrow. So how long do you need to get back to us? Probably a month and a half.
Uh.
You gonna go to ZB, go to ZBA?
Well, we got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to the client too and see whether they want to just show it going down and around the wetland. So if they decide they want to do that, we could be back to the next meeting. Otherwise, whatever, I don't, I don't know, Jacques would know better on the timing if we, if we do go to the ZBA.
I'm not sure what the schedule is. I mean.
You only, you only have one meeting in November, 'cause Thanksgiving's your fourth Thursday. So.
What would be the date? What's the deadline for that one?
November 13th is your, their next meeting and then the one after that's December 11th.
Well, we, we could be on, we could make the next deadline. It's, when, when is that? Do you have that in front of you?
Four.
A zoning.
Are you, that's, zoning deadline would be.
If we choose to go there.
The 10th.
Yeah.
November 10th.
The 10th of November.
No, put you on December, so to come back here, you can't go there.
It'd be January before you'd be back.
It'd be January before I get back.
Right.
If we go to the ZBA. Okay.
They're looking to move it to a date certain, that's all.
Yeah, we can, we can get back to you first of the week on that.
Then we'd have to re-advertise and re-notify the abutters if you wait until after about five minutes from now.
Five minutes. If you lock out the door, we're done.
Maybe two minutes if we.
Cause you have Christmas as the fourth.
Wrap it up, what we do.
Yeah, I think so. We'll come back to the next meeting with it, with no wetland impact.
It's November, that's two weeks from now.
Yep, that's fine. Yeah, I have, I have it, I have the road already graded, I just have to loop it around and finish the grading the rest of the way, so.
Do you have anything from Army Corps saying this driveway in there, this new driveway's okay?
We're gonna have to, to talk to them about that.
It'd be nice to have something since we've been through all this.
I'll, I'll grade it, I'll, I'll send you the grading on it. You can talk to them and get an email or something.
I haven't got anything other than that with them. He did reach out to me since then.
It'd be nice considering what we've been through though.
I'll get, I'll give them a grading plan, I'll show them that the volumes are equal and, and we'll get an email from them if we can, that, that's okay.
That works for me.
All right, so we'll be here at the next meeting?
Yep.
November 13th.
Somebody make a motion?
Make a motion, continue with this 77 Sewell Hoyt Road. Particul.
Number 13.
November 13th.
Second. Discussion? Call in favor? Aye. opposed to staying?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Nick.
The next item on the agenda is AMS Properties LLC. Tax map 412, Lot 104, cluster subdivision, 18 lot cluster subdivision. Come on up, sir.
Craig, did you read the pitch letter?
I did not. It wasn't there when I checked my emails.
Yeah, it was like five months.
Oh. Typical.
I just gave them my particular.
Typical Steve.
Several people.
Oh, of course it is. Takes him several to say what he got. Holy moly.
Yeah, I bet you thinks that too.
Have you read this?
Have I?
No, we just, literally just saw it when I locked the door.
You got it before me.
And mostly it doesn't make sense to me, so.
Before we go too far, we need to consider this for.
I think we need to make a vote as we, if we think this is a regional impact.
Right.
Oh, she has information on that.
I have information on that.
Oh, boy.
No, no, it's not that.
Oh, boy.
So we're gonna reconfigure a couple of lots, 'cause we have a couple that are bigger, bigger lots, so that we have enough open space to not have to include the Goffstown piece. So the Goffstown piece would be taken right out of the open space.
So who's gonna own the Goffstown piece?
Um, we're probably gonna offer it to Goffstown, 'cause it's a separate piece.
Or the golf course.
Or the golf course, 'cause it abuts the golf course.
Or, they both abut it.
Does it regional impact if it involved it?
Well, if, it's gonna involve it one way or the other, no matter what. A, A, I think it's gonna be regional impact. I can't speak for the board. Just because it's town, town lines right there, we have to let them look at it and they, they can decide if they think it's a big deal or not. Just like the one we did down in Riverdale, it wasn't beside Goffstown town line, but the traffic, yeah, but I do. Remember that mess?
I do.
So just, just the fact the town line's involved, we should notify the town.
We have notified the Goff.
And, and I think we, well, I, I think, I don't, something. Well, if, it's gonna involve it one way or the other, no matter what. A, A, I think it's gonna be regional impact, I can't speak for the board. Just because it's town, town lines right there, we have to let them look at it, and they, they can decide if they think it's a big deal or not. Just like the one we did down in Riverdale, it wasn't beside Goffstown town line, but the traffic, yeah, but I do. Remember that mess? So just, just the fact the town line's involved, we should notify the town.
We have notified the...
I think we, well, I, I think, I don't...
I think I will go down and talk to the girl down there, about if they're not considering the Goffstown.
The girl being Patty?
Um, you need to get on and talk to her right now, or...
I did not get to talk, talk to her, I'm reading on art, to kinda look at things and see, like, do we have enough in where to be able to do the open space with just the where land?
Well, just... With changing the use of the land in Goffstown, I think, well, you're gonna be involved in the town's planning board anyway, Goffstown's planning board. To give the land to whoever, it's gonna be a lot line adjustment. So, Goffstown's gonna have to approve that.
Yeah, they approve the lot line adjustment, because the lot line adjustment is, is in Goffstown.
Right.
But she gets a separate tax bill for the Goffstown piece.
Yeah.
It's shown on the survey as one parcel.
It's all describing the deed as one parcel, right?
Then she has to wait for us.
It's shown on the survey as one parcel. And then Steve Keach goes on and says that we should... We recommend the applicant obtain approval from Goffstown Planning Board, of course, he didn't hear what you just said, but... So what's the board think? Do you think it's regional impact or not? Can we have a vote? All those that think it's regional impact, say aye. Aye? Those who don't think it's regional impact?
I'm gonna stay, because I don't know what it is, but...
Same too. At present? At the plan without taking the property off?
Well, you gotta take, take the property off, you're gonna have to get both Goffstown and Ware's approval on it.
If it's a lot line adjustment, we're gonna make it all easy for Goffstown.
Yeah, you gotta do the, you gotta...
Still gotta do it.
Yeah, we both have to approve it.
Right.
So, that's covered by RSA six seventy-four fifty-three.
Yes. Room number four, I believe, according to Steve Keach's letter.
Now, what's it make a difference if we keep it?
Pardon me?
What's it make a difference if we keep it? Say, we keep it.
If AMS decides to keep that Goffstown piece.
I don't see a difference. Except who's gonna, if the Goffstown piece is in conservation, which I estimate would be open space, who's gonna be monitoring it? Who's gonna own the easement? I'm sure Ware Conservation Commission is not wanting the easement over the land in Goffstown.
Well, it's not gonna go to Conservation, we're gonna, we're gonna own it.
You're gonna own it, but the easement, the town would have an easement to monitor it. Even though, even though the homeowner association owns it, the town gets an easement over it.
No, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna put that in.
Oh, we're literally doing a lot line adjustment. Back up.
We're not putting it in the Conservation, we just hold it.
You still gotta do a lot line adjustment then. Or be a subdivision, I guess. It doesn't have any frontage.
But it's its own lot, isn't it? Cause it's in Goffstown?
No.
No.
Describing the deed is just one whole piece of land.
But then it's, I'm confused, cause then it's a big deal. It's all one, but it's not one.
Right.
It doesn't sound like it was through it, yep.
And we get separate tax bills. I know it's different towns, but different tax bills for, um, so it gets confusing.
For years with lots in two towns. It's not unique to you, will you say?
Can't keep it, we can't.
So I, I think... So I would say yes.
Yes.
Does the golf course?
The golf course abuts that piece, so... Well, that was one of the thoughts.
Right.
I would've thought it would, I mean, the line must be, I don't know.
You can't just give it away, you gotta do a lot line adjustment.
That would be the way.
That'd be easiest thing to do.
That'd be the easiest thing to do for Dylan in Goffstown.
See if the country club wants it, do a lot line adjustment, and just, okay.
That, that would be the easiest, but I still think it's gonna be a regional impact, and...
Yes.
Yes.
I think we got four, four people saying yes now, and Chuck's unsure. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So motion's four zero one. That it's regional impact.
So who makes that determination?
We just did.
Oh, that's it.
Well, I think it's pretty clear in the RSA.
And, and if you want, it's not a big deal, we, we get sent plans to Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, town of Goffstown. Town of Goffstown would've got them anyway, cause they have to approve the plan, so it doesn't add a lot to your whole thing, it just covers everybody. So, according, reading through Keach's letter relatively quickly, skimming it, have you talked to the fire department about it, Sistern? No.
They just, nobody's looked at that, they, they aren't ahead of the fire department.
Okay.
Would it be moving to come back in two weeks, with a better plan? You also had a site walk. I'll give them a chance to digest that letter. Give it to the appropriate people.
Probably, probably would be best to come back November thirteenth, after everybody's digested this.
Well, that's, I'm just saying, she gets to Goffstown too, and talk to Stonebridge or whatever.
You're gonna see Patty and, what's her name, Joanne?
I only know Patty.
Yeah, you do.
I said I only know Patty.
Oh, okay, okay. You don't know Joanne Duffy?
Oh, yeah, I, I know her last name.
Yeah, you knew her, yeah, you know her. You know the planning board chairman too. Tim Redden.
Well, he's our DPW director. But the thing is, I mean, you also just did a site walk Saturday, so anything that you came up with from that too?
Well, without a plan, it's hard to say what we came up with from the site walk. The one thing I did notice is that Tim Matheson, I believe it was, complained about water ponding between his front yard. We went down and looked, and it's an old stone arch culvert, cause it was the railroad. And the abutter took some pictures and gave them to me, but the inlet's plugged, we looked at that, Bruce and I got down and looked at that. And the outlet is open, so it appears a rock from the head wall fell in and plugged the stone arch at the inlet, and therefore the water's ponding up at the inlet. So if the town fixed the culvert, the guy probably wouldn't have a problem. The other culvert we looked at had about a eight inch, I forgot what kinda tree it was, no, the eighteen inch.
Wild cherry or something?
Probably wild cherry, blocking about half the outlet, literally up against the culvert, blocking the outlet of the culvert. The other culvert was fine. Up at the, up at the horses, the culvert was fine.
So DPW needs to be notified of the box culvert, right, or whatever the culvert is.
Yes, yes, it's, it's an old stone arch, stone blocked culvert.
Well, and on the other side, in front of the Curtis place, right?
With the tree on one end, the other side...
Yeah, sloped away.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the culvert, Curtis place also seemed to be sloping the wrong direction, but that's just a visual, so...
Well, and there was a big low spot in front of it.
Yeah.
So who do you notify Jason about those?
Have them run it down.
Okay.
I'm just skimming through real quick to see if anything major that I see in here. He's saying the road is intersection with River Road is at about a, almost a sixty degree skew, which is allowed. But it goes on to say streets shall be laid out nearly to intersect this... Wow, come on, Tom. Streets shall be laid out to intersect as nearly as possible to right angles, so he's recommending adjustment of the horizontal intersection to get closer to ninety degrees. But your, I'm sure your engineer and surveyor can figure this out too. It's like ma, major.
That's kind of important on River Road for sightline, because that's a busy, busy road.
Especially if you're skewed like this, looking back over your shoulders. That's the major things I see, but... So we wanna get continued to November thirteenth, and you guys go to Goffstown?
I'll call Patty in the morning, talk to her.
Patty, Joanne, and Tim.
Have you been to Conservation yet?
We did.
And?
They weren't happy, they really think that it shouldn't be a cluster. They wanted, they wish they had been notified sooner, so that they could've had more input to determine whether or not we should be allowed to do cluster, or whether we should've been using the entire hundred and ten acres. They don't necessarily want to be in charge of it.
Interesting.
I thought it was.
Why is that?
I don't know.
We were a little dumbfounded by that, to be honest with you.
He's on the conservation.
Right, yep, yep.
It took me by surprise. Steve and even Andy agree with, oh, no, you're better off to have everything filled in, and it goes against everything that we think about leaving open space for drainage and percolation and everything else.
While, while, but...
Because once somebody owns that lot, there's nothing stopping them from clearing the whole lot, at least if it's in conservation, they can touch it. I was taken by surprise by that comment, honestly. I, I don't really agree with that.
Well, I think they've had so many problems with Duck Pond, is it?
Well, the, uh, but everyone's different, you know, you learn a little bit each time, and you address these problems. Life goes on.
Did we get an official letter from those guys?
You were supposed to get something.
We did.
I didn't get it.
Is there one in the folder?
I don't know. Am I supposed to look in the folder?
You can, this is, I just got this one too, this...
Okay.
They had forwarded it, I guess, to, I don't know who, but not to the entire board, so we didn't get that before we went to the conservation meeting. So questions that they asked us, we had no idea what they were talking about, cause we had not seen that.
I, it's addressed to me, but I don't remember seeing it, I now look through my emails, anyway. This was from a September tenth meeting. Same thing as comments, concerns, follows, we would like to have looked at the previous plan earlier. Concerned approvals seem to have become well settled before their input. This could even be as vulnerable with an open space subdivision, makes sense. Sightwalk of the applicant be a possibility, so we can get a better feel for the land. Who will be holding conservation easement, who will be owning the open space? They have concerns with the surface drainage depicted, the orchard subdivision created unintended holding pond next to its entrance, killing off the trees where this was not intended. The new retail store has had regular flooding onto its parking lot.
They're talking about Dollar General.
Oh.
I, it took me a minute to figure that one out too, but then I realized it was Dollar General.
That, that's...
That had nothing to do with Orchard Hill. You know, just poor site work.
That, that was poor construction. Plans were okay. Plans weren't completely okay, but anyway. Even though each presumably met the engineer's runoff calculations, problems were created. We don't wanna be surprised with low end ponding or washouts. Same applies to septic system and costly replacements that were needed in short time at the adjacent to the north subdivision.
Yeah, half of those have already been replaced.
They're concerned about the buffer strip of building setback along the open space, were not shown in the building lots. Buffer strip of building setback along the open space, not shown, okay. Power line easement cannot be included in the open space calculation, was it, question mark? We'd like to see the open space calculations, the final sign plan must show that internal boundaries are monumented, not to be set. Partially true. Conservation Commission doesn't know where the planning board is in the process. They would like the applicant to appear and present on a future conservation, which you did.
That's the September, they didn't have a...
So we didn't get any, we didn't get any other letter from their last meeting?
But when Andy wrote that, and he said they really had to see it soon enough at conservation, that plan was on the table that night, we didn't have a quarter, that was the plan. It was there, we just couldn't do anything with it, right? We didn't have a quarter, there was no meeting. The plan was there.
That was August, or when was that?
June.
June?
June or July.
Yeah. We had time, and I told them. Nobody listens to me.
I was gonna say to you, okay, buddy. Relax, hold on.
So, one of the problems, with having the golf course take all this little piece of property, you all have a contiguous border with the Goffstown's open space land, right? In other words, you're getting rid of the frontage you had, that's a Concomitant Hills?
No, that was the pheasant man. That didn't, that didn't include the golf, the Goffstown land. It's, it's contiguous anyway.
Yeah, but it won't be one if, if the golf course takes it along, do you still have contiguous?
I believe so.
Oh, yeah?
Doesn't, doesn't pheasant open space?
Yeah, pheasant open space.
Zoning back. Be careful, don't get all this cooking next up. Yeah, pheasants open space.
And the Goffstown is...
Is this?
Oh, that far away, huh? Okay, so that's the new, that's the, yeah, all right, I got you. It's quite a bit of a... Well, it's usually, if you're having one open space land, they say contiguous.
Right, expanding.
Yeah.
I don't like, I don't like this personally, but... It's the way I register.
Well, that's open, that's open space too.
Yeah, that's...
That's what I really like to avoid.
Well, that's what I register we have to do, so... We change the regs, that's what they gotta do.
In a way, it's kind of nice, because it shields the development from River Road. You know, it kinda puts it out in the private, its own little thing there. It's kinda nice, really.
You don't have, have to listen on that traffic.
You don't have all the houses along River Road.
Well, I agree with that, but...
Well, I mean, that's kind of worthless open space, in a sense, but...
It's all wet, so that's why.
This, this is a... Per the regulation, we have to have a buffer, perimeter buffer. Okay. These are hers. Don't lose your pencil. You guys can respond to this in the Goffstown, and get a lot of work to do in three weeks. It's a lot of work.
And talk to the fire department.
Yes, please, about the Sistern.
Okay.
Motion, motion to continue to November thirteenth.
We have a second, second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, stay? See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Can I just want to order for a minute?
Can you wait? Can you wait?
Can you want to order?
Still couldn't hear you.
Can we want to order? Can I present you something while you're still here?
Yes.
So, you guys got a letter, um, on Al's drive for the final acceptance? It's, well, it's right here, planning board. Um, writing to, as a capacity of the trustee, all the improvements required for Al's drives have been completed in accordance with the town standards and been inspected by town engineer Keach Nordstrom. Based on this, I'm formally requesting the town accept Al's drive as a town maintained classified road. So Steve Keach wrote to us and said that, as customary practice, that they need to request it to be complete, or request it be done, that, um, all the boundary certification as built will need to be done, which is why I'm telling you he's here. Um, and then you still, I think you went on a site walk, but the, you have to do a final site walk.
We did a pre-construction site walk, yes.
Okay, so a final one will have to be done prior to...
We can't do that until May.
I don't think so.
There's no ice cream.
I knew that, I knew that was coming.
We do two sight walks in Al's way, and not get any ice cream at all, Neil.
Sorry, I'll bring you some that I got, how's that?
Something's just wrong with that.
No. So he said, it's KNA's opinion, and everything is now in order for the process to commence without delay. Um, the first step is to submit a formal letter, and then, and then the board would do a final, and then we would get as built and boundary certification. So, I guess what I'm asking is, with snow falling soon upon us, can you do a site walk relatively quickly? So that, can I just finish, so, so that I could proceed forward to a public hearing with the selectmen? At least, I have to post it, but at least I could do it as the seventeenth, so could you guys?
Wouldn't they need us to recommend on the thirteenth? Okay, so we have to site walk now on the thirteenth?
And I take a chance that everything's okay? I'm just saying, cause he's got four more bounds to set, and he's got the as built done. I just wanna move along.
So, so you don't want us to do this Saturday, do you?
I'm not a town this Saturday.
When's deer season?
Just wear orange, just saying.
No, 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 that's not the point.
Oh.
I don't wanna be there if it's deer season.
So you're retired?
The second Wednesday or first Wednesday?
When's Veterans Day? The eleventh, right?
Tuesday.
Eleventh or the fourth?
Um, there's, what day of week can you make it?
Evening or daytime?
Well, I don't know.
Veterans Day the eleventh, I can do the eighth. Right?
Yeah.
Is that next?
No, that's three Saturdays.
Oh, it's on the Saturday?
Yeah.
Because of daylight.
Yeah, yeah.
And all I wanna do is see that your work is done, so...
Yeah, we'll have a plan, I can probably have emails out in the next week.
So you, if I schedule you a site walk for the eighth? What time?
Ninetyish.
Ninety.
I won't be around, but nine AM?
I can't make it either.
Nope.
I can't make it either. I may be walking in my sleep. Ten? Give you an extra hour? Oh, I'm gonna be up all night the night before with teens, so. Ten's fine.
Ten?
So much for that today.
That's late for you, right? So, all right, so I'll post you guys a sidewalk on the eighth, on the eighth for ten AM.
I walked in the last one.
Yeah.
I didn't think there'd be enough parking.
I don't know that you could, I don't know that you can walk that far, but.
I don't want to walk that far.
So, I'll post, I'll post your public hearing for the eighth. He'll get everything done and it'll fall into place. Especially if I get the engineer's letter too.
Sidewalk Saturday, November eighth at ten o'clock.
Right. All right. Thank you.
You have one you want to make?
Yeah.
It all comes together.
Just have Heidi open up the ice cream stand temporarily.
Just the freezer. Yeah, open the freezer. Open the freezer about nine fifteen in the morning, we'll be all set.
No, that's all he stayed for was to.
That's what I came back for.
That's what he came, oh, you, did you really?
Yeah, I was halfway home.
All right, thank you guys. Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the CIP. Mr. Cloud, how are you?
I'm pretty good. Yourself? I, Denise Puritan is the chair of the CIP this year, but she is out of town, out of state actually, as a commitment. I'm vice chair, but Jack actually sat in on the preparation of the final plan. So, rather than me standing here and stammering my way through it, Jack's gonna present tonight.
Grab Jack again.
He's somewhat familiar with the process.
Somewhat, yes, he is.
So, let him think it.
Mr. Jack?
Me?
Not you.
You're not here just for.
You're not here for your good looks, that's for sure.
Thank you. Another year.
No, thank you. Well, yeah, I could've made the last one, but it was canceled.
Yeah, this is bad timing for Denise. If we knew a little earlier, Tom could've been with us when we prepared the document. I think he could easily carry it off, but I volunteered to do this tonight. Denise should be back for the select board on the third of November and on eleven twenty-five for the finance committee. She very graciously volunteers a time for charity. It's actually Franklin Graham's, Minister Franklin Graham's Samantha's Paris.
Samaritan's.
Samaritan's Paris nonprofit. And she's volunteers some blocks of time and if something like Milwaukee floods, she's off. So, that's why she's not here tonight. Okay, again, I want to thank everybody for participating.
Except me.
Well, you never showed up. We were gonna put you a ding here, put a demented black mark.
Put a Francis' absent.
We could've put a black mark for you. And plus, the department heads, Naomi and Beth, did a great job supporting the CIP. Again, just to refresh everybody's memory, even though the Zerage urgent one, this is different, different definition than necessity. They're still all for the first, this year, twen- two thousand, twenty twenty-six. Anything that's three and below are out in the future. Just so we got that straight. And some people say, so why don't we have any threes this year? Well, because they're out two to four. Likewise for the. These two pages, four and five, we call the I chart. By, by statute, we're required to show a six-year look ahead and including this year, six years. And all of our large pieces of capital equipment that we have is listed. And you'll also see the types of funds, should we have funds? And they would be, see, capital reserve funds, balances, as of what, last week?
The thirtieth, I think. Yeah. The thirtieth September.
Yeah, so they may be off by a few bucks, but they've gone up, they haven't gone down. And then, next page, again, you'll see the same thing with the bottom here, kind of tallying up. CIP requests, the reason why there's very little fidelity, fidelity going out in the future is because all we've done is basically ask them for placeholders in the CIP. These things can shift around, for instance, like a truck, T, whatever, is slated for twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. And it looks like the best one we got now dies. We'd have to obviously use that as a candidate, as well as the police car. So, this is the best that the department has at this point. And then you go down below here. You'll see that a long-term bond for the DPW garage is coming due. It'd be last year on the ten-year bond this year. We have no bond next year. And then the rural preservation bond in oh-nine, it'll be done in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-nine. So, these are the payments going out that we've contracted, contracted with the bond bank. These next pages, six and seven, are what we call our whiteboard. It's basically what we ended up approving for this year's CIP. The only exception is a cistern at the safety complex, a chief asked for that based on the fire, well, I think it was a long-term issue, but it became a sort of a near-term necessity after the amount of water required down on B and B Lane for that big fire. Almost instantly drained. The one on Ghul Road. And then they started having hauling water and other towns came in, the neutral aid. The cistern slash pond, if you will, at the end of B and B Lane, has some issues. He's trying to get a contract to replace that. The design's already done. He's just trying to get it implemented. Basically, the iron pipe is rusted. Plugs, sometimes plugs up the truck or the nozzles and/or the sediment is so high now that it sucks it up. So, that's an issue. But there is the safety complex, a hole in the ground that exists that was supposed to have a cistern put in there. And it wasn't for funding constraints. There's already all the wiring and plumbing to run the cistern to the fire station. Currently, the fire station has a trickle of water coming out of their garden hose because of the well limitations. So, the biggest issue he has for concern, proven out again, is lack of water. And the biggest issue would be in the wintertime for going into ponds. They have to have somebody in a, whatever it is, kind of a suit that will keep them from falling in should they break through the ice. And being the weather as it is, it becomes problematic for using ponds. So, he's got some near-term things with Ghul Road, but still, we should say B and B Lane off Ghul Road for that cistern or pond, if you will, at the end. He's thinking he might be back next year, so we put it off a year, based on his request, after we did the whiteboard. So, this is sort of the way it is. You see portable ventilators being requested. And this is basically, we'll see it later on, but essentially what it is, is a grant. And currently, one of the people in the ambulance tending the patient has got to manually control the oxygen level and various other parameters. This will take that over within the parameters set up by the EMT or paramedic. Down below, again, we're back again. Ten-wheeler, we'll talk about T, whatever it is, the two thousand Mac, ten-wheeler died. The frame broke, so corroded, they can't weld on rust. So, we're down to ten trucks now operating. So, out of eleven. Road reconstruction, our annual, if we don't get this approved, basically, everybody can go home for the summer or sit around because there's no money for doing summer roads. Transportation scales, again, there's enough money, we'll talk about that in the revolving fund, I think it's called, for recyclables. And the total priority request for this year is a million oh eighty. Cost impact to the town by taxes is seventy-six, seven sixty-seven thousand dollars. And the biggest reduction here would be the ten, would be the road reconstruction. You see the note below. Two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars come from the state, which is some of the money coming, I think, back from our registrations that we pay in town. Police department, page seven. Cruiser replacement, they have one out of, out of action now. It's a twenty eighteen Dodge Charger, police interceptor. When they were responding to a domestic violence, I believe it was. And they were on a classics road and unfortunately, there was a big rock in the road, which crinkled, penetrated, damaged the oil pan. And as they were in, attending to whatever needed to be attended to at the residence, by the time they came out, the engine was knocking very loudly and destroyed the engine. So, they are trying to get a replacement used, put in that. And I don't know what the latest number is. It's like six grands for the engine and more money to have it done. So, I don't know exactly what the number is, but that's out of commission. So, basically, the town aware only has four police interceptors at their disposal until this gets fixed. And even so, they're in longer tooth. Down below, board of selectmen, silver panels on safety complex, hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred dollar grant from state and, from a energy commission in the state of New Hampshire. I think the money ultimately comes from the federal government. Tax rate is zero, we'll talk about that. Tax rate impact is zero. It needs to be acted on this year. So, that's the note down below. Regarding the fire department ventilator, here is, I won't read it all. Zol, zoller ventilator, you can see the attributes as how it functions and why it will help displace the attention of one of the two people assigned to manage the life support. Any questions on that?
Just because something's archaic doesn't mean it's like, needs to be replaced.
Well, the problem is, you've got somebody like yourself with a heart attack.
Talk about people like you and me. Just because we're archaic doesn't mean we're not functional.
Well, there's dysfunctional levels.
A little dysfunctional, yeah.
Want me to name them all?
No.
I might actually fall into one of those categories. But the issue is, is to allow the two people to tend the patient and not worry about the oxygen level and all this other stuff. This is supposedly supposed to take care of that. Page nine, police cruiser, same things you see year after year, trying to get these vehicles. Eighty-five, two eighty-three is the value they wish to raise by taxes. Sixty thousand, which implies twenty-five thousand be taken out of various funds that they have on hand. Five cents tax rate impact per thousand. Also, the chief, oh, my out of, no. So, the rest of these pages here for the, for the police vehicle are his supporting documents, we included them. And you see the five frontline police interceptors, engine out of service. Two support vehicles, ACO and a low ranking. Page eleven through fifteen are sort of like showing you what the annual cost on the right-hand side of page. Well, it's not a page, but it's the one that was blue with a couple of pages for the fleet management history. This says sixteen, almost seventeen thousand dollars. That was a dated slide. The most current is, instead of eighteen, whatever it is, twenty-two, three sixty to date, with three months left to go. That's on page fifteen. So, this is what it costs us a year to maintain the fleet. And while these vehicles are being main, being repaired, the ones that are the older ones, of course, there's a sworn officer that's probably getting paid full benefits, retirement, everything. Faring these down to a repair shop, somebody else goes with him, you need to get a ride back. And the repeat, the repeat is done once it's fixed. And so, it's one thing to pay for the repairs, it's another thing to pay people not to do their job down on idle, effectively, not adding to the service delivery of the town, which is patrolling, police investigations and whatever. So, that's a downside from just having equipment that keeps breaking down. Any questions on the police cars?
There's not too many choices for police vehicles anymore.
You can, yeah.
These Tahos should last longer though than a ordinary car, right?
Here's the problem. Ordinary cars don't sit around idling for a hundred fifty percent of the mileage. That's the problem because every hour of idle is, is supported to be twenty-seven miles. Add up all the mileage hours due to idling, and they add up all the mileage, and it's significant. And these aren't somebody that should, you know, put the key in and hope it starts, or they call AAA, or stops along the way. But you're right, the only one really is the Chevy Tahoe. And the reason is, when you look at all the equipment, because we really only have a car out on patrol, or maybe two at a time, some particular ships. Accident happens, there's various things they need to have for chattel, for traffic control, signage. All this stuff just won't fit into the charger. So, even though the car may function as a police car, if you had an auxiliary unit following you, that would be necessarily a problem. But today, everything's gonna fit in that car, or you wait. And so, that's why that car is selected, plus the ground clearance. All the class six and private roads we have in town, plus Clough State Park, it's just not meant for a sedan. So, that's the other issue. I mean, it's better than what we had before, but when, when finally Chevy decided to compete for the police market with a Tahoe, Tahoe, that became the one of choice. To the point. To that point, um, last year, they requested a five bay carport with a evidence storage. Um, basically, what happens now, should somebody be in a car, arrested, suspected, whatever, in the car, uh, they need to bring it after they're done examining it and put it in secure You can't use a Sally port, which is the garage hooked on the end of the, um, police station, because that needs to be available should somebody be arrested. They need to bring them in a secure area before they let them out of the car, lock it, and only have one door leading into the processing area, uh, just for safety. So you can't use that bay for storage of a vehicle or some large items that might have been involved in a robbery or something. So the current plan, which they've been using, is to rent multiple storage lockers at a cost. So the other, so what the, the last one on the right, or could be on the left, is on our drawing, is a, um, a unit that can lock up for chain of custody issues on the evidence. So nobody can say, who controlled this stuff over the last month and a half, two months? And they could say, we have it secured, versus be down at a, a place you rent by the month. The other four bays are for some of the, uh, police pursuit vehicles that would respond, because what happens in inclement weather, ice and snow, is that, um, they can't leave without cleaning off their vehicles. And if it's domestic violence, that needs to be responded to beyond the one person on duty at that time, um, they gotta take the time to clean it off and make sure that it's, you know, free of ice, that's the requirement. So this would alleviate that, plus the sun damage on the prior cars, like the Crown Vix had, uh, doors, excuse me, delaminating, that caused a lot of issues. A lot of the sealants around the, um, glass and stuff like that deteriorates seats. So, um, this, this is, this is being requested to solve those two problems. One is an immediate issue in terms of, um, chain of custody for storage, and the other one is allowing you to have a optimized response time for officers in inclement weather.
We have six vehicles, why we only need four, four bays?
We have five vehicles, frontline.
It comes, seven here, but I said six, because one's out of service.
It's five up top.
Your chief has a car.
The chief's got his.
Goes home.
They want the, they want the, oh, he's, could be in there, the question is, there's only so many people on any one point in time. So one person on patrol, somebody could be called out, and the chief could respond. That could be three.
Well, my question is, are we still keeping a vehicle or two outside anyway?
Pardon?
Is there still going to be a vehicle or two outside, even though we have?
Well, dog catcher, I don't think, but he.
I wasn't worried about the.
He's highly sympathetic.
I didn't count that one.
And then you've got the two administrative vehicles. That's more money, you just want to try to keep it as.
Okay.
They think they can do this building for thirty green.
Huh?
They think they can do this for thirty thousand?
All the utilities is run?
There's no, this is just three sides on the base.
I question it too, they got a bit.
Yeah, well, it has to be, the thing is, you can look into these steel building places, and they're cheap, but they don't do the snow load for this area.
Again.
Check into that.
I'm just saying.
The snow load, they're pretty expensive.
Plus, we're not having all five units out on the road at once anyways, right?
No, you probably wouldn't have, you'd probably have the maximum of two on the road for patrol, but when things go bad, other people are going to respond, they come to the town, pick up a vehicle.
Right. And presently, they only have four anyways, right?
You say about a good four.
I wish some of these big truck companies would come up with a frame that doesn't corrode.
Well, that would be, that would destroy their plant, planned office lessons, right?
How many of them sell more trucks?
Huh?
How many of them sell more trucks?
No, they sell enough.
The truck, um, again, like I mentioned, the Mack two thousand ten wheeler, frame is, uh, gone, and it's basically limped out to the gravel pit and sitting out there till we decide what to do with it. And we don't really have any engines in that line that we could replace for the existing stuff we got. So it's basically waiting for decommissioning. What was replaced is the newest truck, have we got the newest truck, or we giving the newest truck?
I think we took delivery.
Thank you.
This will be express winter.
That will be replacing the Mack and not the Volvo we wish to, we were planning on replacing, so we're already a year behind. So, um, this particular truck, uh, the new ones, just repeated again, all ten-wheelers in the future, have an anti-corrosion, corrosion steel body, Hardox, it's a Swedish alloy, which now is marketed around the world, they get a commission or whatever it is, and it's very costly, but it really does away with the issues with mild steel or stainless. Seal aluminum is fine, but it's not as rugged as steel, when you're doing, uh, construction jobs. If we were to take, uh, this ten-wheeler that's, you'll see on the next page, in a somewhat dilapidated space, state, it's fifty thousand dollars for a body, that's a sander and a dump body combination, that would go on these trucks. Uh, and I talked to Jason, he doesn't think you could buy a mild steel body anymore. So this is what the truck looks like, so every time it goes out, people are taking bets, what will fall off, and is it going to survive? And this is the Volvo, the problem with the Volvo is, is the electronic engine controls have been problematic for all of them, we got three left, two six-wheelers, and this truck, and at this point, the, uh, we don't have a picture, but the dump, uh, section, the rear section that the real tailgate hooks to, which is basically a structural corner, uh, is pretty, pretty damn corroded. And if that breaks, it's out of commission, so.
This looks like the River Road Bridge.
Huh?
This looks like the River Road Bridge.
Uh, this is not as bad as the River Road Bridge. If it was, we'd have fish plate, plating all over the place, right? Like Band-Aids?
Yeah.
We have Band-Aids on this, but not to that degree. Jason included on next three pages, just a notional, um, rotation and nothing accelerates its demise beyond what's expected. Taking off on the theme of the police. Page twenty-two, T-eight, ask me, T-four is a two thousand eight dump truck, Volvo ten-wheeler, it's got a hundred and eight thousand miles on it, and it's hard to compare a tonware plow truck, fully loaded, in low gear, plowing the back roads around the lake, whatever, with a state vehicle going fifty miles an hour, forty, forty miles an hour down the street, with a load of salt and sand on it. It's a hard life. So these are the vehicles, of all the hours and stuff, you can even look and see that this, uh, these two Bobos actually have more hours, the six-wheelers, which is, uh, hell was it, uh, seven and eight, but their body is better. Now, one of these could blow the engine or transmission, and they become the actual candidate to be replaced, but right now, not bearing any other disasters. So we basically have ten trucks now operational, actually, you might have eleven because we picked the last one up recently.
What was that one?
No, that's one that was proved in twenty-three.
Twenty-three, right? Order in twenty-three, it takes a year and a half to get these things in here, so I think like.
And then we didn't get one last year, so.
But it's not a Volvo.
No, we got a Western Star or an International, I can't remember.
What's this one going to be, this is not going to be a Volvo?
We have to put up the bill.
It's, the thing about the trucks is, matter what, pretty much, no matter what manufacturer, you're buying a cab and a rail for chassis, he specs out differentials, front ends, transmissions, um, engines, so that his fleet has basically the same type of engines, transmissions, tire sizes, so you don't have to get unique stuff as much as he can. So it'll be, whoever comes with the lowest bid with all that equipment on it. Again, fleet, uh, just want to show twenty twenty, on page twenty-three, you look back in two thousand nine through two thousand fourteen, you see those six years, we didn't purchase the truck, we are paying for it now. We could have bought trucks for one eighty back then, maybe one seventy. The, the truck we're replacing now are two eighty if we can hold the price.
But nobody had any money back then.
Huh?
We were, nobody was working back then.
Uh, come on, please.
I wasn't.
Please. Well, maybe you aren't.
I wasn't.
I'll give you credit for that. I'm just saying, we're paying for it now.
It's okay for me.
And then, um, you can see, no truck was purchased in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-five. So, again, eight trucks, the opportunity to purchase trucks, even if half of them, we'd be much better off what we have now, even the twenty fifteen Kenworth that we purchased, this is the oldest of our new stuff, if I get the number right, twenty-five thousand dollars repairs if you're in it.
I'm just not willing to give you that one.
Twenty-five thousand dollars to.
You haven't got the repair numbers.
Have what?
You haven't got the repair numbers on it. There's a sheet for the repair numbers, remember?
I'm just saying from Beth, I heard you. So the truck is the newest of our, uh, oldest of our new trucks, twenty-five thousand dollars to do some work on it. And part of the problem with repair costs is, especially these days, a lot of the large truck apartment manufacturers is out of this country, Canada, tariffs, which even make it even more expensive. And again, like the police, uh, they got eleven trucks, they all go out, if eight only, if eight start and three don't, or have a problem, they can't go out and plowing, two mechanics start working, three people stand around waiting for the truck to get fixed. And, um, so again, we're paying for people, their wages, their benefits, retirement, and they're not doing a service delivery. And if that's not bad enough, we're paying people with a truck overtime to finish the routes that these other people aren't doing. So we don't track, if I would call, down and idle time for people not doing their tasks they're supposed to because of some reason, we don't track that. But it's not unreasonable, there's probably a large portion of a person through the year tallied up. You're not getting that service delivery, whether it's repair of summer roads or plowing, and then on top of that, you pay overtime for somebody to drive their trucks to completion, which is even a bigger load, they're already on overtime, they'll keep until the roads are clear to their policy. There's eleven plow routes. Highway department, does not include the fifty grands for the, uh, T-four back body, which they're opting not to do. So we're not even at the plow season yet. So, um, we buy a plow truck, it's with a tilt, Hardox steel body, that tilts traditionally as a dump and towards the side, so that the auger and the spurter spits it on the, uh, driver's side behind the cab, and then plows, lights, uh, wing plow and front plow and all the paraphernalia that goes with that. So this is what it costs us to run geriatric vehicles. Does not include the cost of people not doing the service delivery and the overtime to make up for it. So it's not, it's not a trivial amount of money, okay? Unfortunately, we don't track it that way, but, um, I don't know what a, a full-up, I could ask Beth, I should have, um, everything stacked up for fringe benefits and everything, it's probably cost a seventy thousand, eighty thousand dollars for a truck driver a year.
Yeah.
I think that's about right.
It's an average, it depends on the health and transport.
So you can add another seventy on that, or eighty, you're approaching a truck. See, that's the goofy part, it's cheap when you don't buy them, but everybody says, well, operating budget, some costs, they're going to spend it anyways, not so fast. Well, we had, um, six default budgets in the last ten years, um, there isn't a lot of slack left on the budget. Road reconstruction maintenance, just coming up for where, these are some of the, um, types of stuff they do for reconstruction maintenance. Birchwood Road Drive is a candidate, not solely the candidate, but an example, in case anybody doesn't live on Birchwood, shouldn't feel upset. Floodwaters Twin Bridge Road, had a lot of work done on that, and Finish Road Abbey Drive, after it's been rebuilt. Okay, scales, um, here's another issue, which, uh, we have the money, what's it called, revolving fund or a, thank you. We have a revolving fund with this amount of money to purchase a scale, a hundred thousand dollars. Why do we need a scale? Well, first of all, look on the right-hand corner here, over the last five years, town has made up thirty-six thousand dollars, because we don't take enough in for the, uh, charger for demolition, this is only demolition. One year, we had minus twenties, almost twenty-nine thousand dollars, town had to make up out of budget. See, there's really two issues. Some, let's say Craig takes his truck, drives in, and he goes up and says, I got some demolition. So the guy comes out and looks, tries to estimate yards, that's how we charge, by yards, irrespective of the material, okay? So he arrives at a number, if it's sheet rock, it's a hundred and some odd dollars for sheet rock type stuff or blocks, if it's wood, insulation, bedding, it's forty-four, some, something like those numbers. So if it's a mixed load, it's even worse. So then, that's when the negotiation starts. Craig says, it can't possibly be that much. And the other guy says, well, maybe you're right, maybe it's, uh, a little bit less. So this is, this is what basically goes on every time. When you have a scale, it's pretty obvious. Go up, bring the vehicle upon the truck, truck or whatever vehicle upon the scale, there's a weight, and, and negotiations is done. What, if we get charged for hauling by the, by the load, we get charged by dumping by the ton. So we're going to pay the hauling and the dumping by the ton. So we're gonna pay the hauling and the dumping by the ton, no matter what we take in. So, talk about fairness, this is the fairest, fairest way for people to be charged for demolition at Town of Ware.
So the person who runs the scale is gonna have to be a certified weighmaster then?
Don't know.
It's a state law.
Don't know. Well, it, well, I don't know.
Well, somebody could-
So you don't wanna, so you- Yeah, okay, we'll look into that, but the point is, I'm sure they can be trained.
Yes.
Okay? So the point I'm making is that people get very upset when they get told how much money it's gonna cost when you don't really know if it's right. To the best of these people's ability, I'm not casting any aspersions on the people that work at the transfer station, but they're looking at this load and they're trying to take a guess at what tonnage is. Effectively, they charge by yards, but they're really trying to figure out, so at the end of the year, it comes out perfect. Because nobody wants to pay extra money from the town taxes, and nobody wants to have a residual, which means we're taking advantage of the town people. We don't do this for profit. That'd be a zero net sum. Some years we get it, okay, some years we do very poorly at it. Every town around us, for the most part, uses a scale. And they charge, ready for drumroll? Two hundred dollars a ton. Okay? That's just a pound. We don't. And some people have said, I have no, I've added all, but I don't have specifics. Some people say we're a magnet for taking other people's demolition from other towns. Most towns don't even accept contractors. Tell them to go down to, well, BMB Lane was operating, go down BMB Lane. Now they gotta go someplace else, after Bradford. So, this is a halfway to keep-
So we're gonna spend a hundred grand to save eight grand a year, by the numbers here?
Well, how about in twenty, how about in twenty-twenty-three?
You average out and take grand a year, roughly.
Okay.
Four forty grand for five years?
Yeah.
Seems kinda strange, but that's right.
Oh.
It's fair.
It's fair.
I understand it's fair.
We got people screaming for twenty-five cents on their taxes.
Problem is, I put all my stuff in there in twenty-twenty-three, so I'm the one that got ripped off.
We're waiting for you next time. We'll put the word out. Next page, if there's nothing else on the scale. A, a grant was, uh, the Hampshire Municipal Solar Grant Program, which I suspect is funded by the, uh, federal dollars. We probably got our chunk, state hands it out. And, um, basically, the grant was for a hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars. And the question is, how many panels does that buy with all the infrastructure and the inverters, okay? And the answer comes up, not, well, it's even, you can't really say how many panels because you don't know exactly what the power per panel is when you get these installed. It could be more efficient, meaning, uh, this has been at four-twenty, it could be four-fifties, which means less panels. Or if the price is cheaper, then you get more power, you know? So that's a little bit, but for the most part, the way it's set right now, based on the size panel they put the bid in. Electric bill, we, we burn a hundred ninety-two million watt, a hundred, a hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred and forty kilowatt hours a year for the safety complex. The bill is roughly nineteen thousand dollars. It's anticipating this will be fifty percent reduction in the power bill. Contracted bearing solar, will provide progress invoices, which can be submitted, uh, monthly to the Department of Energy, and the Town of Ware will get reimbursed.
The one nineteen-two is just for installation?
No, no, that's the whole inch of letter. That's the panels.
That's what I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the whole.
So what about long-term maintenance?
Well, I've had mine for
I mean, no-
fourteen years.
I asked that question for the sake of budgeting. Long-term maintenance and decommissioning needs to be in, in the works.
I'm gonna go on a limb here, everybody around this table will not be here when that happens.
Right, but if you're not anticipating that, even within the CIP, we're not in a position to say, because somebody's gonna ask.
That's a fifty-year problem.
And then the other question that I have is, how does this work? I've heard a lot less than fifty. How does this work within the context of us not having a solar ordinance at this present time? This is not a private facility, this is a public facility, how does that work with?
Well, nobody told me I couldn't put it up, nobody told me I couldn't put it on my house. I've had mine for thirty-
Private, private things, that's, that's different than what we're considering for a public issue, or even, so I'm asking that because we've already told one particular group that they can't because we don't have a zoning-
Commercial.
Commercial.
Town is exempt, the town is exempt of zoning.
The town is exempt from our cycling and-
I'm just saying.
Town can do whatever it wants to.
And these would be going on the roof?
Yeah, and it's been re-roofed.
How old, it has been re-roofed?
Five years.
Okay. That's my question, is they'll outlast the roof. So they have to be removed to start having problems with the roof.
Thirty, forty years from now.
But even if it's fifty years out, you're still gonna need to have within the mix a thought of what the maintenance is going to be or decommissioning is.
The inverters, they need-
Right, and who knows if they have a, an issue with a voltage spike or some, some part of the system fails and now you're replacing X, Y, and Z.
Well, you don't have to do anything, blame them up there. If they're not working, just leave them there. I mean, look, this, let's say, let's say usually we're at fifty years, they work. At this today, slightly less than ten thousand years, so ten thousand times fifty is what? Five hundred thousand dollars the Town of Ware offset it for taxes. Not chump change.
Correct, but shouldn't some of that offset be set aside for planning for purpose for the future for this particular system?
If the town select board wanna recommend that, I'm happy as a clam to do that. But I just don't, I mean, fifty-year future, put a dollar away fifty years.
I haven't heard fifty years, I've heard twenty.
Look, mine, mine is pushing fourteen.
I understand.
And they're saying they're good for forty, fifty years, okay? They claim you're supposed to lose so much per year, I haven't lost a lick, Bruce hasn't lost a lick on his. And they have to say something because somebody's gonna ask the question when you sell these things.
So I had, I have solar installed, they said twenty-five-year lifespan on our, our panels. I've had mine, well, about ten years. And I didn't even get, brand-new, I didn't get what they promised me.
Well, that's a different story.
Yeah, but it's a story.
Your problem is, look, just, I know something about this, not that I'm selling this. Depends on how much snow you got. If they shed because of the slope of your house, okay, if there's a whole bunch of conditions and foliage, they bring up a solar calculator, they call it, which measures your angle of your roof and where it is relative to the solar south, do this Ouija board calculation, comes out with a number, okay? I produce fifty percent more than I need. I got twenty-eight panels.
And I've got twenty-nine.
You must have a big power bill.
In the summer, it works great. Well, I'm not gonna say great. In this, and, and we're direct south-facing, right? In the summer. But also in the winter, you have to take into account that, you talk about it shedding snow, right? When, I, I have to make sure that I have signs up saying, watch for falling snow, because when that stuff comes down, it comes down hard.
Okay, the question is, do you wanna approve this one or not? That's why we're here tonight. I, I could come up with all kinds of reasons to do nothing.
So the other thing is, it really, it's really not, it's not something you're ever gonna see. We made a commitment because of money sitting there that we would put it on the warrant article. So if you don't approve it, it's still gonna go on the warrant article for the mere fact that we thought we'd just let you know about it so that we could talk about it in several places. But we did, we did commit to putting it on there because it's the only way, you know, the money's sitting there at the state. They wanted us to sign a contract, and we said all we would do was commit to putting an article in front of the residence for that.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying that, you know, the, the golden goose, you know, the goose that lays the golden egg, is now is twenty-four karat.
I got almost fifty percent of power I don't use each year in the bank. Waiting for a very cloudy season. I haven't even, yeah.
Send it over to Ray.
Ray, may I?
For a price we can.
I just think a lot of the discussion we're having is discussion to have at a deliberative session when there are more people present, and I'm sure it will occur at that time.
Two point?
On the last turn, and we follow up with a, another eye chart. Page twenty-eight. This is for purpose of historical, or maybe somebody hysterical purposes. Twenty-twenty-six is on the right side. Everything to the left is historical data to give you an appreciation of, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, see that seven-six-six-zero-zero-zero number? And look any place to the left, except for maybe twenty-twenty, um, seventeen, twenty-seventeen, and the earlier twenty, well, lower than the last five years. So all the inflation has probably gone up twenty-plus percent. The department has tried to manage it this year such that, trying to make the taxes relatively flat. And the last page is sort of a calculation. Again, everything to the left of the bold line is history. Twenty-twenty-six is the only relevant year because we don't know what's happening in twenty-twenty-seven, eight, or nine, but we took the future request in consideration. And, again, you look across here, the one-one-six-seven, bottom line of twenty-twenty-six is lower than, uh, twenty-twenty-five doesn't count. Actual dollars asked by property, actually used by property taxes in the green bar. One, one-eleven-fifty-seven is this year's, if we vote everything in. Now, recognized, solar and the, um, solar and the, um,
Scale?
No, the scale and the sol defibrillator there, whatever it is. There's no tax consequence with that.
We have the same budget as the school budget, we can buy everything brand-new every year.
I have a different philosophy on that, so you don't wanna hear it tonight.
What happened, what happened to the bridges?
Huh?
What's happened to the bridge?
Well, we're working, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're almost ready to start River Road, I think.
Yeah, we're almost gonna put up, we're ready to put it up to bid pretty soon.
Yeah. You don't need crossbridge, do you?
After leaving the dump and go someplace, I sometimes do, yes.
Then it's an emergency.
Transfer station, excuse me.
Okay.
You know, I wonder when. I kinda held my breath last time. Picked my feet up. Had the dog jump.
So again, the town department has tried to do a minimum in tax this year, keep the taxes in line. Actually, it's less than the other full requests we made, notwithstanding what got approved.
You're doing two more presentations apparently.
No.
No.
Is that directed to me personally or to the CIP?
The CIP.
Answer's yes, and for me, no. Bearing no future complications. Best-laid plans, right?
Comments?
The kind of thing that keep me up at night, is being in business, we can raise our prices with inflation and everything else, and the customers have to pay for it, but the town has to convince people to come up with the money to run the town, because the town is a business.
Oh, some people take issue with that.
Yeah.
It's a zero-profit issue, business.
But it runs out of default because everything wears out so quick, with like, how do you convince people that you need this?
Well, at some point, the tipping point will be when they start seeing an impact of services. By that time, the roads will be in such a terrible shape. Remember that bond we picked up, we talked about earlier? Ideally, you never need a bond if you raise enough money on the road reconstruction each year. We don't. We're still behind probably two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars a year for what we need. So, somebody loses at least ten more years, you're probably gonna see, probably even less than that. You're probably gonna need another one. Because we fixed all the marginal roads that could be benefited by an overlay. And we're fixing the really bad ones as fast as we can, but problem with asphalt, if it's on a decent subbase, is it dries out every year and it cracks. It's not forever.
The chip seal on Colby Road seems to be working really good though.
That was a good move by Benji back then, I think Jason still do-
Because it seals all the cracks, and it's almost like the old farmer's mix that kind of heals itself. And it, it worked really well.
Some people complain about the fact them little black chips you put on there end up in their driveway. Nothing's perfect.
I know, people are gonna complain about anything we do, but it's-
I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. So we didn't need a recommendation to the select board to either approve or whatever the CIP plan?
I know that we recommend to the select board to accept the CIP, CIP plan.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Being on the select board, that's kinda weird, but okay.
I can't second.
No, you can't, no. You can talk, you can't, you can't move.
That's why I haven't said a word.
Discussion other than Ray complaining over here. Oh, you, this Ray. The Ray to my left. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposeds? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passed four oh one. So now we gotta go to master plan, subcommittee, empty? So now we gotta go to master plan, subcommittee, empty? I have nothing to report. Great. Do you have a, we went to new business, other business? How about October, how about October 9th minutes? Anybody want to close this?
So I had a question that on line 27, it says there's three variances. What was the third variance? Because I only see two. Sorry?
I wasn't here that day.
They both had to do with the road and the private driveway and they kind of intermingled with each other.
Do they have a buffer variance?
Hang on, where are you, Ray?
Line 27, where it talks about the three variances, but then it looks like there's only two listed.
Two of them were the private road and common driveway. They had to get a variance for each.
One was 352, one was 1821, and one was 3744.
200-foot setback. I think later on he said. Non-compliance law, compliant law and private road construction waived. I think later on he said he withdrew one of the, one of the variances, didn't he?
No, that was the fourth.
The fourth.
So which one did she, we missed one?
Frontage.
Frontage on a private road. Common private drive.
Well, she may have rolled it into 32 issues related to private, common driveway.
Yeah, I think she wrote them right, did it together.
Wasn't the, the, the subbase of the common drive, we can't waive that? Therefore, you had to get a variance for that?
Correct. That's 3744.
3744, 1821.
I'm going from memory here, I'm sorry. I wasn't even here that day.
Right.
Or is it John Tree, maybe?
He had to get one common.
I don't, I don't have a copy of the letter from.
I do.
The town council. That's where we went by.
So it was 18.2 because it needed a minimum of 200 feet of frontage. 3.5 allows the construction of a residential lot that does not comply with the frontage, or, I'm sorry, ordinance, dimensional requirements, which requires a minimum of 50 feet of frontage, and 3744, which requires private road access be constructed to class 5 standards. Not waived until by a client.
Right. So shouldn't we put that in there?
Yes.
And then the other one that I had was line 48. Is we did, Bruce actually said that, I'm not, by this, it sounds like Downing is supposed to create the maintenance agreement. I think it's, the suggestion was that the owners create an agreement.
On what lines, I'm sorry?
48.
48.
So it should be the.
It was recommended that the homeowners come up with a.
Homeowners collectively create.
Correct. And that, that was everything I found.
Move to accept the minutes of October 9th as amended?
Second.
Reach to.
Good, good.
Session? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Other business?
I had a question. I thought Duck Pond was supposed to be here today. Duck Pond?
He, because we only came to an agreement, so just the agreement that has, he has 60 days from when the agreement was signed to get to you. So he's gonna get to you for December.
Good.
Because he wasn't gonna jump the gun.
Because I thought in the minutes it said today.
Oh, right. He wasn't gonna jump the gun until he got the agreement signed.
Good.
Because it requires surveying.
Right.
I know, it was just signed.
And it just got signed, we just got a free attorney today.
Okay. Just wanted to update.
And I know it's in the works because Meridian has reached out for it.
Right.
Go for it.
The other question is, how do we fix this ongoing debacle with the conservation commission? Because.
I sent, I sent an email to the conservation commission earlier today asking them to be on their agenda at the next meeting to discuss my wetland ordinance, so I'm hoping to bring that up at the meeting.
Okay, so.
If anybody would like to join me.
Based upon some of the things that Ray has shared, I'm concerned that we are getting, I mean, complained about, be yet sidestepped.
We're, we, I recommended to them during conceptual phase, whenever that was, that was a long time ago, to go to the conservation commission. I said, that's gonna be your biggest hurdle.
Right.
Design review, I said it again.
Yeah.
And that's when they got the map, but they didn't have a forum. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if anybody from AMS showed up or not, but. So I don't know what else we can do other than tell the applicant, you gotta go see the conservation commission, you gotta worry about.
So, could, so we presently have a means by which everybody's notified if you sign up for it. Is there a possibility to be more proactive with that? To say everything that the planning board is planning of our agenda, that agenda automatically gets sent to the conservation commission?
That's a great thing to do. What we can do is when Melissa sends PV, she can CC conservation at where and it puts everybody.
That would be helpful. Especially when I'm looking at the RSA. It's like, I don't see the relationship other than when it talks about the makeup that a conservation, which we have as an, as an alternate, a conservation commission member can be on this committee. Right, but prior to his presence, we did not. So in one sense, even though he's alternate, he's our representative to the conservation commission. And you're a full member of that or an alternate?
He's full.
Okay. And then looking at powers to be, it doesn't give me, other than reviewing, it doesn't give them any power over us.
No, they recommend.
Yeah, and so.
They can't approve anything.
That needs to be clarified in that some, some respect to say, this is out of courtesy. They can't say no, they can't take.
They can't take that power.
Well, they can't take, they can't say they can't take that piece of property.
No.
That's the other part.
They can't force AMS to do a conventional subject.
Well, the property state didn't want to, they didn't want to manage it or.
And it was my impression, not this time, but two previous times, that we recommended the HOA to be responsible for that piece of property.
To own it.
To own it, not give it to the town.
Right. With the conservation commission slash town slash conservation commission, we're still getting the easement to monitor it. We can't, we can't just trust the homo, nothing against homo association, but trust the homo association to make sure the individual owners don't encroach in the open spaces.
Correct.
Pretty difficult.
But Pheasant and the PLC took responsibility for that, but I guess where it is, they don't, they no longer want to take on any new parcels.
Who took it?
The Stataqua River Conservancy that's behind our house.
Well, hello. And the state, when you get a grant if you open it for subdivision or project like that, they make you do mitigation and a lot of mitigation is.
Buying property.
By getting a conservation easement either there or another way somewhere.
Okay.
So, I mean, the state forces people to do that and then the conservation commission says, yeah, but we don't want it.
Yeah, and the state changed that into the ARM fund, whatever that stands for. I don't remember what it stands for.
Oh, so you can donate a cash.
Yeah, a big, big bunch of cash.
Yeah.
Did a project where it was gonna be two, or, I don't understand that, though. The price of wetlands in each town, the value is different. I did a job in Meredith where the ARM fund was gonna be a little over a quarter million dollars.
Yeah, so go back to that, you're coming into amendments, right?
Yes, we are.
And we'll happily share them CCs. But what I consistently hear is they don't come to us. It's two-way street. If I include you on the agenda or it's on the agenda, anybody can show up. We pulled things last year last minute because they raised the issue that we didn't see it, you shouldn't be doing it, and then they go on off and write a negative to it.
I was gonna go to the last planning board meeting, but it was on a, or, conservation commission.
They moved it to Tuesday.
Yeah, and you moved it up a week because of the conflict and I didn't know they moved it to Tuesday. So Steve emailed me, goes, can you give me a call? I got a question about the planning board meeting this week. Said, yeah, I'm gonna go to that meeting, don't worry about it. Then he emailed me on Wednesday morning saying, meeting went fine, I hope you feel better. I felt like I was in the Twilight Zone or something. Today's Wednesday, isn't it?
Well, at the last conservation meeting, I don't know if you heard me, but I, I told the whole people there, I said, we're having a walkthrough Saturday.
Yep.
And then they wrote you a letter saying, we want to go to a walkthrough. I did everything.
That letter was September.
That was September. They didn't give you any comments for October's meeting, that was September's meeting.
When I told them that we were going to the walkthrough last Saturday, they could have showed up, somebody could have.
Yep, they sure could have.
That's the communication that's given, but it's not taken and received.
Well, just, I mean, if we're, if we're putting the information out there and there, it's available to them or vice versa, I guess we should be CC'd on everything that they got on their agenda. So that we, both parties are on the same page, not to, not to make things worse, but just to be in awareness. So then there, there's no more he said, she said stuff because everybody has the same information. And that would be applicable to anything that might be on our agenda that applies to other departments or other committees, that, that would automatically go to them. So if we're in a, dealing with, say, for instance, we, have you talked to police fire department about a cistern? Well, that might be a way, any type of subdivision like that should go automatically to the fire department.
It does, doesn't it?
Well, after the fact, I mean.
Well, no, no, we, we ship it out to seven places. We ship it out to.
Right, but all that, all that documentation goes, but as far as the meeting agenda, that doesn't go. I don't even get the meeting agenda.
Why?
I don't know. I have to pull it, pull it off the web. I get it in an email, you need to subscribe.
Send an email with it.
Yeah, if you, if you subscribe to E! News or Melissa's been trying to send things out, but also Melissa now has access to the website, so she'll be posting.
So is that, is that a tab on the website or something?
It's on the front left-hand corner, says subscribe to E! News and you click off every single box you like.
That I can do.
And every time we post something, you get an email and you can see if you want to read it or don't read it. If you don't want to read it.
So, so just as, when I was on the board, we got all this documentation in paper form mailed to us or come in and pick it up, right? Prior to a meeting, so we were prepped. But then it stopped because of all the, this was posted on the website and I didn't know at that time. And I was calling, what's her name? Forget it, no.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Katie.
Not Katie, Kelly. Oh, she's, it's on the website. Oh, okay, that's good to know. But I thought I'd get an email about it and didn't. But now, because I signed up, I get an email from.
Everything.
Everything, which is fine.
We can run it for any agenda, any minutes, you name it.
Point taken, I'll, I'll fix that.
Yeah.
And, and now Melissa's asking for the plans with PDF so you guys can see them. I know it's, it's a big plan on a little screen, but you can at least look at it or come here.
I can zoom.
My screen.
Oh, I know you can see.
So we can look at all of this on our private computer without getting into problems with the 91A requests?
Yeah, because you, you get it through your.
If it comes through the town email.
Through your town email.
Okay.
That's good. Don't have it sent via personal email, have it sent to the town email.
Oh, that one.
I agree.
I don't have that one.
And don't change your phone because you're gonna start again too.
Oh, my gosh. Just when I had it all under control, my phone completely went berserk and went blank and I couldn't retrieve any of that information. So now I got a new phone and I gotta start all over. And Naomi knows the trouble I went through to get this established and now I can't do it. I gotta start all over and I'm, I'm afraid to ask.
You, you, you didn't do a backup?
How many times did it take? Three, four times that you helped me before I got it?
It was almost painful.
Yeah, and then I finally got it and I said, I'm so proud of myself, I can do it on this and that, and then my phone dies.
Yeah, because once you get a new phone, you have to get a new optic, optic, I think, but I don't know.
So I had a.
So Bill, I think we can try, I mean.
Well, at least if it's more routine, then there, then there's no yabas. And that takes a little of the pressure off of us to say, well, why didn't we? You know, and, and that way we are instead of. And it's just a piece of information that this is when it's happening.
And if you read it and it's got up the interest, then we did.
Right, or then it also would follow up with not only the agenda, but the minutes. So you would know all the details that were discussed at that level.
That's what I've been doing prior to the meetings is I print out the agenda and the minutes a few hours before I come here off the website. It's kind of nice for me because I know how to do that.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, I know. So.
I'm depressed.
Thanks, Ray.
Question?
Yes, sir.
We're going to try to come up with a solar ordinance?
A what?
Solar.
Ordinance.
Yes.
We have one.
Well, I, I had a couple of things I wanted to talk about. I looked over the Charleston one that.
Danny Jean.
Danny Jean suggested. I looked at, I guess his handout that you sent, Clean Energy, New Hampshire. But anyway, I think Danny Jean is on to something. This seems, I, I found a pretty neat ordinance with a few changes.
Is that her, your draft or her draft?
It's her stuff. It's the Charleston and the Stradham one she asked me to put together. With the part of one next to the other. So I cut and pasted the Stradham with the Charleston like she had asked.
Yep.
And that's what it looks like first round.
I mean, we haven't got much time, but if you use the New Hampshire model solar zoning ordinance, you won't do it this year. Guaranteed.
So, so timing wise, based on our.
November 13th, we're supposed to finalize amendments.
November 13th is where we're finalizing amendments?
Yeah, it's gonna be after these two that you just continue to. So last week when you sent me away.
Which may take a while.
Last week when you sent me away, there was a, we discussed the solar amendment, wetlands that Craig's gonna go and talk about. And then I suggested on 1711, which is your third amendment, should I go? No, it's not on your agenda, so. The third one down, nothing has a, nothing has any amendments numbers. But the amendment to 1711, I thought it could be pretty easy per Senate bill 281. If you take 1711 and cross out no, and then put building permits for new homes shall be issued on class 6, patun to RSA 67441, because then if the law changes, you don't have to keep changing your warrant article. And then you can leave the second sentence that talks about private roads. That was a simple fix. It's just my suggestion, you don't have to follow it. And then if you looked at the ADU, which was, was a House bill 577, there was some revised definitions that went with this ADU laws. And that's section four. And then you also asked me, article four, to come up with an amendment through Steve for a definition of a junkyard to put in there because we don't have one. Nothing is numbered, so. I'm just throwing out what I did for my homework. And then the next one, the amendment. I'm just throwing out what I did for my homework, and then the next one, um, the amendment we have to do, is my suggestion, is a new accessory dwelling unit. Maybe not stated this way, but I did come up with it from the New Hampshire NHMA handbook. May need some finessing a little bit, but I would suggest that we do a new one, and then you're gonna delete on your last one, nineteen point one point ten through nineteen point one point ten point eight. Cause it's no longer needed by special exception. So those are what I put together for you, just so you can start looking at things.
So that, okay, so that attends, it does address all five, except for, well.
The only one I couldn't remember was the, was it what the.
Private road clarification was the thirty-seven, four, four.
Oh, that's the one, that's the one I didn't do, sorry.
And we, we don't have the ability to do an exemption on that right now.
So we leave that.
They had to have a variance, so we wanted to change, at least the town council suggested we change that or address that in some fashion.
Thirty-seven, four, four.
Would, because it said.
There was one sentence that was left out, but we couldn't.
Right.
We could waive the pay, but we couldn't waive the subgraded horizontal, vertical geometry.
And that's, we may want to, or may not want to.
Right.
So we may want to just leave it as is, or change it, that's the only.
Thirty-seven, four, four, okay, I couldn't remember the number. So, I started, because your window is kinda short, so I started at best, um, cause Craig, uh, last week, when Danny, last time we met, Danny Jean was here, and she gave me her copies of the Charleston and the Stratum after doing some research. So that's what I handed out to you today. Um, and then Craig sa, gave us one that was thirty-eight, but now it's twenty-eight, are you replacing twenty-eight altogether? Okay, so it should be twenty-eight, but you also.
I can't get a dumb thing to format it.
Yeah, I saw that, I'm like, he needs a format lesson, so, when you're ready, just let me know.
It's cause I got it from Amherst.
Yes.
I got a Word doc from Amherst, and I think it's the way.
It's how they formatted, yes. So I can, I can help you format once you're done, but I'm not, I wasn't gonna do anything until you went to the conservation.
Wetlands is to replace.
Wetlands, he's looking at doing that two tiers.
Right, but what's the number?
Twenty-eight. So it's the wetlands, so twenty-eight, he had thirty-eight, but I think it's a replacement of.
The whole new twenty-eight.
And then, and then the whole, um, and then the rest of them, like I said, we haven't really even filtered out what our numbers would be yet, so I left them there.
So what would this be under, then?
That would be your first one, new proposed solar ordinance.
Right, but what, what number technically would it be?
So you end with thirty-seven, it'd be thirty-eight, yeah, if you wanna do that, and then that's why I didn't know, because it would be thirty-eight, whatever, down through.
Right, great, I always did the pass. Okay.
And then the replacement would be twenty-eight, and then I thought a simple one for two eighty-one would be just the cross out of no, and then add pursuant to. Cause then if, if it, if it keeps finagling and changing, six seventy-four, forty-one, you've covered yourself.
Right.
I just didn't know how, and then the, uh, ADU laws, the definitions, we'll just have to check what ours says. The amendment is the motor vehicle junkyard one came from, I think Hampton, but it does talk about two motor vehicles, you know, you can read through that. Municipalities no longer require the ADU by conditional permit or special exception, those are my notes, so I think you have to create a new article, which then would be thirty-nine. Cause there's no way you're gonna squeeze it in between there. It's kinda like renumbering the X's on the highway.
Have ADU already in.
So ADU was always nineteen, one, ten, it was under special exceptions, but you're not required with a special exception anymore, so therefore you have to remove nineteen, one, ten through nineteen, one, eight, that talks about all the things that go with it.
Yeah.
So that one would be shortened up, but the new article would be thirty-nine, probably. Um, and we have to word it a little bit differently, I took this out of the guidance that New Hampshire Municipal Association shared with us.
Yep.
I didn't put it in the commentary, but, you know, it talks about the, the septic, it talks about, um, they're prohibited in multifamily use, so you can't have a duplex and add a ADU. And then you can't sell your ADU through condominium conveyance, it goes with the piece, so you can't condo out the detached. Talks about attached, detached, talks about owner occupied, somebody in one and the other has to be an owner, and there has to be some sort of, um, proof, I don't know how we're gonna do that. Aesthetics, I don't think, the only thing, I left aesthetics in there for the fact that what do you do when you have aesthetics in your village area? So the aesthetics part, I just put the same aesthetics apply to the accessory, and we'll have to why, you know, tweak it a little bit, for sure. Minimum, you guys have to decide, because what NHMA provided us was that the ADU may not be limited to less than seven fifty, and it shall not exceed unless otherwise authorized. I do know, I think Bedford goes to two thousand square feet, a little bit big.
Really?
Their ADUs two thousand square feet.
I thought it was a thousand. When I last looked at it.
And Southern Hampshire told us they went to two thousand.
Ah.
That's optional.
So.
No, that they, if you wanna build smaller, that's the most you can build for the ADUs two thousand.
We do?
No, no, we can't, we can keep it to nine fifty.
Yeah. And then the septic system, it explains there how it works, so when you're adding all your bedrooms together, you know, um, you have to make sure you get a state-approved septic.
Yeah.
For all the bedrooms.
So.
But it doesn't need to be a separate system for the ADU, is what I understand.
The statement, unless otherwise authorized, that's in the state law?
That's, no, that's their, I, I recommend it, I only put it there because you don't have to go to nine fifty, you can go to a thousand, I'm just saying. So they said you have to do a minimum of seven fifty, or not to exceed nine fifty, unless, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have put that in there. You guys can decide if you want more than nine fifty, that's what that meant, that was a note for me, that was a note for me.
So that's not something that we.
No, 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 that's not gonna be part of it.
Part of our statement.
I should've stopped after nine fifty.
Otherwise, it suggests that you can come and petition for a conditional use for.
Right, sorry, I took it out, I was trying not to do all the commentary.
That's good, I, I, for all this purpose, it should be there, I think, but.
It's just you guys have to talk about it a little bit. So that's where I did, and I just forgot thirty-seven, four, four, but it's a start, cause I know.
Awesome. Very good start. So we just gotta go back in our documents to find the thing that you sent us.
FY, the state.
I've got the copyright here.
On principal residents.
Yeah.
Even says twenty-eight on it.
Okay, well, that's what you need to add.
Want you to hand that out to everybody?
I'm trying to.
Do you want me to, oh, you have some there, okay. Is that the one you handed out first?
Yeah.
This starts at forty.
The only difference, the only difference is it says twenty-eight and twenty-eight, one, I couldn't get any, anything more than that.
Oh.
I went, I went through and looked.
You did better than I did.
I went through, I went through.
Yours says the same thing. You have a huge gap.
Yeah, I, I didn't worry about that. That's, that's an Amherst thing.
Where's, where's the gap?
Oh, on page, uh, it says ninety, ninety-one.
That's on Amherst.
It's a formatting.
That's Amherst's page.
Yeah, it's like, there's a picture there.
And the same thing on eighty-eight.
Eighty-two? I got one, I don't need more now.
It's, see how the blank page.
I'll take you, go give it to the conservation commission.
I'll hang on to it.
Okay.
Oh, you wanna go?
Yeah. Doesn't matter.
You need copies for the conservation commission.
Save me a little ink, a little paper.
Thirty-seven, four, four, and there was a sentence in there, you said?
What? Replacing the whole Article twenty-eight.
So.
New language?
Yes. It's, so it was suggested a thirty-seven, four, two, unless otherwise approved by the planning board, as far as twenty feet in width. But then four, four is horizontal and ver, vertical geometry shall be the same as. So technically, they had to have a variance for the Downing go through there, cause that doesn't meet. Right, so I would suggest that otherwise, unless otherwise approved by the planning board.
Take off on thirty-seven, four, two, remove unless otherwise.
No, add it to four, four.
It didn't make sense.
God, you're getting a lot of reading material here.
Yes, we are.
Just calling into it.
That's the one I missed.
And that would be, that way, we would have to go see it, as opposed to believe pictures.
Yeah.
You said they want these back, huh?
I thought, do you want these CIP things back, Naomi?
Um, I, I have to make more for the rest of them, but if you don't want them, I'll give it back.
I don't want them. Every, every other year, every other year you wanted it back. Hey, here's, here's a picture of that culvert on, with the road, on the outlet.
Looks like a bear gun.
I didn't reach in there too far.
Okay.
I did the other end.
Get the other, but all you do is stick your hand in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it'll be adjourned.
Jeez.
No, who else?
I don't know. Do we have a second?
Second.
No, I just, I guess it's my turn.
What are you doing?
He just wanted to do adjourned, we got a second, discussion, Naomi, we discussing anything? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, obtained. Good night. I don't, I'm not, don't touch the switch, turn off the light, though.